Welcome. Thank you for joining us today for the last Commissioners' Meeting in March of 2021. So I'll call the meeting to order. Once again, we are joined by our friend, veteran Don Bradley, to lead us in the pledge. And I'd like to welcome today a newcomer, Pastor Tanya Brubaker. She's the pastor at Calvary and Grace United Methodist Church, and she's going to lead us in the invocation.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America, to the republic for which stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, leavened, just as for all.
As the indulgence of all gathered here, those who share my Christian faith, and those who honor faith traditions, and those who honor no faith tradition, as I pray. Dear wise and loving God, first let me say thank you on behalf of all who are gathered here today. Thank you for your many and abundant blessings. Thank you for life itself, for the measure of health we need to fulfill our callings, for sustenance, and for friendship. Thank you for the ability to be involved in useful work, and for the honor of bearing appropriate responsibilities. Thank you as well for the freedom to embrace you, or the freedom to reject you. Thank you for loving us even so, from your boundless and gracious nature. In Christian scriptures, you have said that citizens ought to obey the governing authorities, since you have established those very authorities to promote peace, and order, and justice. Therefore, I ask that you would bless our commissioners, and the various officials and leaders here today, and the work and people they represent. I ask that you would graciously grant them wisdom to govern amid the conflicting interests and issues of our times, a sense of welfare and true needs of our community, a keen thirst for justice and rightness, confidence in what is good and fitting, the ability to work together in harmony even when there is honest disagreement, personal peace in their lives, and joy in their task. Bless and guide the agenda set before us today. Please give us an assurance of what would please you, and what would benefit those who live and work in and around our beloved county. In the blessed name of my Lord and Savior, Jesus Christ, I pray. Amen.
Amen.
Okay, we will move on to a proclamation in recognition of Sexual Assault Awareness Month.
Whereas Sexual Assault Awareness Month is intended to draw attention to the fact that sexual violence is widespread, and has public health implications for every individual and community in York County. And whereas sexual violence occurs when someone is forced or manipulated into unwanted sexual activity without their consent, and whereas sexual violence happens to people of all ages, races, genders, sexual orientations, religions, abilities, professions, incomes, and ethnicities, and whereas sexual violence undermines the values of strong communities, and whereas we have recently seen a world where the Internet has become the new public space, we connect with partners, friends, family, coworkers, and strangers alike. As technology has evolved to become a part of our everyday lives, our awareness of ways that can be used to bully, threaten, and commit abuse has grown as well. Even though the abuse occurs behind a screen, the impact on the victim, their loved ones, and the community can be just as harmful as sexual violence committed in person. And whereas we are calling on groups whose influence can play a critical role in changing the culture, and whereas let us come together as a community to build safe online spaces in our community, learning how to practice consent online, keeping children in your life safe from abuse, and participating in respectful online communities. It is important to look at our own actions and see how they affect others. And whereas with leadership, dedication, and encouragement, we can be successful in reducing sexual violence in York County through the prevention, education, and increased awareness. When a community unites, victims are heard and supported. And whereas York, Pennsylvania strongly supports the efforts of national, state, and local partners, and of every citizen to actively engage in public and private efforts to end sexual violence, including conversations about what sexual violence is, how to prevent it, how to help survivors connect with services, and how every segment of our society can work together to better address sexual violence. Now, therefore, we, the York County, excuse me, the York City Mayor and the York County Commissioners of Pennsylvania, do hereby proclaim April 2021 as Sexual Assault Awareness Month, and encourage all citizens to diligently work toward the elimination of sexual violence. Given this day in York, in the Commonwealth of Pennsylvania, on the 31st day of March in the year 2021, a witness whereof, we have unto subscribe to our names, York County Board of Commissioners.
They were joined by Sarah Walters, who's the community outreach advocate for the YWCA, to share a few comments regarding Sexual Assault Awareness Month.
Thank you so much for reading that proclamation for us. I just wanted to draw attention to some of the services that YWCA York offers to survivors of sexual violence. YWCA York provides free confidential services to victims and survivors. This includes trauma-informed care in the form of individual and group counseling, support groups for victims and non-offending significant others by master's-level clinicians specializing in trauma. We also offer legal advocacy and assistance in filing protection orders and accompaniment during court hearings. We offer a 24/7 hotline where survivors can speak to a confidential-trained advocate, receive support, information, resources, and safety planning. We also provide medical advocacy, so any survivor who is seeking medical treatment in York County Hospital can speak to a YWCA advocate for support, resources, safety planning, and also information on knowing their options and how to proceed from there, including legal options, forensic exams, and anonymous reporting. The other thing I want to mention is that we have had uninterrupted services through COVID, which we are very proud to say that we have been able to continue providing support throughout the pandemic. Sexual assault impacts people of every gender, any age, and any background. Millions of people are impacted each year, including folks right here in our community. So the need for service is real and ongoing. And as was stated in the proclamation, it takes an entire community to support survivors and work to change the culture that contributes to sexual violence. One of the easiest ways that you can participate in Sexual Assault Awareness Month is on April 6th. It is teal Tuesday, so wear teal, as you see I am dressed up in teal all month, to support survivors and show your support for them. Thank you so much.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Okay, we'll move on to item number five.
I make a motion to approve the consent agenda, items A through E as listed below.
Second.
I have a motion and a second. Any discussion? Hearing none. All those in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Opposed, motion carries. Item number six.
I make a motion to approve a contract agreement between the County of York on behalf of the Public Relations Department and Civic Plus Manhattan, Kansas, to provide website services, including complete overhaul and hosting of the county's website, www.yorkcountypa.gov, for a total cost of $59,779.99 for the first year, with recurring service cost in subsequent years, half the cost to be funded by the County Records Improvement Committee.
Second.
I have a motion and a second. Any discussion?
We see Mark Walters here. Do you want to talk a little bit about the website design?
Sure. So the county has, provided your forthcoming vote, getting a new website. Civic Plus actually does the planning commission's website, I noticed, Felicia. All they do is government websites, and several counties, at least half a dozen in Pennsylvania, have their websites hosted and designed and put together by this company. We really like them. They're a solid fit. We're going to get started here soon, but I just want to tell the public that we're not sure exactly when we're going to press go to launch live, but with an election, we do not intend to do that before the election. It's important that what people are used to right now is what they get between now and the election, when they need such information. So it'll definitely be after the election, but we'll get working on that here with your approval.
You talked about the funding. We got some money from the Records Improvement Committee?
Oh, yes. So we were able to, the first-year costs are the largest, and we were able to cover half of that, thanks to the Records Improvement Committee. So thank you to that committee. Really appreciate what they do, and it helps offset taxpayer dollars.
Thank you.
Any other discussion? Hearing none. All those in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Opposed, motion carries. Item number seven.
I make a motion to approve a contract agreement between the County of York on behalf of the Voters Registration Elections Department and SOE Software Tampa, Florida, for election report management and online voting results application from April 1st, 2021 to March 31st, 2026, funded through the York County Records Improvement Committee for a total cost of $64,569.
Second.
I have a motion and a second. Any discussion? Hearing none. All those in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Opposed, motion carries. Item number eight.
I make a motion to approve a contract agreement between the County of York on behalf of the York County Sheriff's Office in Axon Enterprises, Inc., Scottsdale, Arizona, to provide a five-year contract and budgeted purchases for tasers and associated equipment with Axon Enterprises, Inc., for a total cost of $162,619 for the period of March 31st, 2021 to March 31st, 2026.
Second.
I have a motion and a second. Any discussion? Hearing none. All those in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Opposed, motion carries. Item number nine.
I make a motion to approve a contract agreement between the County of York on behalf of the York County Prison in Solteris, Mechanicsburg, Pennsylvania, to install Citrix server biometric hardware and software in the prison lull library for a total cost of $30,585 paid from the inmate welfare fund.
Second.
I have a motion and a second. Any discussion? Hearing none. All those in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Opposed, motion carries. Item number 10.
I make a motion to approve a contract services agreement between the County of York and Herbert Rowan &amp; Grubik, Inc., York, Pennsylvania, to provide engineering, right-of-way acquisition, public utility commission, and railroad coordination services for the bridge demolition and approach roadway adjustments of York County Bridge 270 that carries Pleasant Acres Road over the East Penn Railroad Railway in Springsbury Township for a lump sum fee of $106,500. These services are in accordance with a cooperation agreement between York County and Springsbury Township. Funding for this proposal will be provided from the local use fees in the 2021 liquid fuels budget.
Second.
Motion and a second. Any discussion? None.
Did you want to say something about the project? I know you're here. Cam.
Thank you. Steve's handing out an aerial photograph of the project site. This is a project that's been many, many, many years in development, and is associated with Springsbury Township's and the York County's cooperation on extending Davie's Drive, which is very near this bridge. For over 10 years, I think, the discussion's been going on, and the length of time, frankly, has been associated with Springsbury Township securing a PUC order to extend Davie's Drive across the railroad. Once that project is completed, that will enable the county to remove and demolish the bridge, Bridge 270, which is part of the strategy of the county to eliminate redundant bridges. So once Davie's Drive is extended, then the county can move forward and demolish the bridge. This might not take place for well over a year, frankly, because now the county has to go through and get their own PUC order from the railroad. So this agreement's getting all that lined up so that when Davie's Drive is extended and crosses the railroad, the county can immediately move in and demolish the bridge. So there's another motion later on that's associated with the same project.
Right. Sounds good.
Any further discussion? Hearing none. All those in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Opposed, motion carries. Item number 11.
I make a motion to approve an agreement between the County of York on behalf of the Facilities Management Department and Masonry Preservation Services, Inc., Bloomsburg, Pennsylvania. This agreement is Phase 1 final for the rehabilitation of the east roof tile of the center dome of the administrative center at a cost of $104,000.
Second.
I have a motion and a second. Any discussion? Hearing none. All those in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Opposed, motion carries. Item number 12.
I make a motion to approve a sponsorship agreement binding between the York Professional Baseball Club, LLC, and York County on behalf of the Department of Human Services for the purposes of promoting mental health awareness during the 2021 baseball season for a total cost of $3,500 funded by a grant.
Second.
I have a motion and a second. Any discussion? Hearing none. All those in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Opposed, motion carries. Item number 13.
I make a motion to approve the submission of a grant application on behalf of the Adult Probation Department to the Pennsylvania Commission on Crime and Delinquency, Harrisburg, Pennsylvania, in the amount of $435,532. This is a grant application to the state for unmatched monies to offset probation officer salaries. Each year, 100% of the total department's salaries are requested for reimbursement. However, we only receive a percentage of the request due to officer eligibility and available funds.
Second.
I have a motion and a second. Any discussion? Hearing none. All those in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Opposed, motion carries. Item number 14.
I make a motion to approve the submission of a grant application on behalf of the District Attorney's Office to the Bureau of Justice Assistance, Washington, DC, in the amount of $340,000 to sustain the salary infringed benefits of one GBI prosecutor, the expansion of pre-charge diversion through the Family Engagement Unit, and continuation of the York City Police Department's National Network for Safe Communities contract, with the period, project period between October 1st, 2021 to September 30th, 2023.
Second.
I have a motion and a second. Kyle King usually speaks on behalf of the District Attorney's Office, and he was unable to be with us today, so I have a few comments that Kyle would like me to share. So if you're watching Kyle, hopefully I'll do a good job of relaying your comments. This grant that they are applying for is an extremely competitive grant. They anticipate that there'll be 22 awards nationwide. With that said, York County has done a great job with the GBI initiative, which stands for Gun Violence Initiative, over the past two years. So they do believe that will put the county in a good position. For those of you who aren't familiar with GBI, the Gun Violence Initiative, the premise of GBI is that there's a very small number of people in any city that perpetrate the vast majority of violent crimes. And in order to reduce violent crimes, law enforcement has to identify and target that small group of people who are often involved in gang and drug-related activities. And the mission of GBI is to facilitate law enforcement strategies that equally engage police with the community toward a common goal of reducing gun-related violence. So the grant will help continue the funding for the GBI program. It will also help expand the Family Engagement Unit for personnel and services, as well as equipment and hardware for the Family Engagement Unit. And it will also provide for the continuation of National Network for Safety Communities contract through the York City Police Department. The National Network of Safe Communities collaborates with the communities to reduce violence, build trust, and increase public safety. So I wanted to share those comments from Kyle. Thank you for providing those, Kyle. Any other questions? Hearing none. All those in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Opposed, motion carries. Item number 15.
I make a motion to approve the grant offer of $300,000 in state funds for the PennDOT Bureau of Aviation for the rehabilitation of the Hangar Area apron at the York Airport.
Second.
I have a motion and a second. Any discussion? Hearing none. All those in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Opposed, motion carries. Item number 16.
I make a motion to approve a bid award between the County of York on behalf of the York County Sheriff's Office and the X-Ray Imaging, Inc., Wykoff, New Jersey, the lowest responsible bidder for a 3D X-ray machine for the administrative center front door security post at a total amount of $32,815.
Second.
I have a motion and a second. Any discussion? Hearing none. All those in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Opposed, motion carries. Item number 17.
I make a motion to approve a purchase between the County of York on behalf of the York County Prison and Whitmore Public Safety Group, Coatsville, Pennsylvania, for federal cartridge HTSP 9mm Luger ammunition at a total cost of $279.69 per 1,000 round case for a total cost of $20,976.75 under a PA co-stars contract.
Second.
I have a motion and a second. Any discussion? Hearing none. All those in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Opposed, motion carries. Item number 18.
I make a motion to approve a purchase between the County of York on behalf of the York County Prison and PAC Industries, Harrisburg, Pennsylvania, for a T-120 Express Dryer for a total cost of $10,777.50 under a PA co-stars contract.
Second.
I have a motion and a second. Any discussion?
And I know this is a lot of money, and we discussed it at the prison. This is a commercial dryer, obviously, for a large contingent at the prison.
Any further discussion? Hearing none. All those in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Opposed, motion carries. Item number 19.
I make a motion to approve a purchase between the County of York on behalf of the York County Prison and Whitmore Public Safety Group, Coatsville, Pennsylvania, for 70 new Glock 17 Gen IV model handguns for a total cost of $20,405, net of a trade-in of 35 Glock Gen III Model 22 handguns, and 13 Remington 870 shotguns.
Second.
I have a motion and a second. Any discussion? Hearing none. All those in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Opposed, motion carries. Item number 20.
Motion to approve a purchase between the County of York on behalf of the York County Prison and HD Defense Mechanicsburg, Pennsylvania, for the purchase of 15 9mm SBR carbine rifles at a total cost of $14,175.
A second motion.
I have a motion and a second. Any discussion? Hearing none. All those in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Opposed, motion carries. Item number 21.
Motion to approve a purchase between the County of York on behalf of the York County Archives Office and Momentum Mechanicsburg, Pennsylvania, for Momentum to create a conversion for permanent and long-term county records to PDF-A format. The funding for this purchase is by the County Records Improvement Committee for a total cost of $15,262.
A second motion.
I have a motion and a second. Any discussion? Hearing none. All those in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Opposed, motion carries. Item number 22.
Motion to approve entering into a temporary construction easement for the property located on Abel's Road and Forge Hill Road to facilitate the work necessary for County Bridge Number 55, located on Forge Hill Road in Lower Windsor Township over Cabin Creek, at no cost to the county.
A second motion.
I have a motion and a second. Any discussion? Hearing none. All those in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Opposed, motion carries. Item number 23.
Motion to approve the county entering into two temporary construction easements, and one deed for property located on Reynolds Mill Road for work on County Bridge Number 89, located on Twin Arch Road in North Cudores and Springfield Townships over the Cudores Creek, at a cost to the county of $97.25 for recording fees.
A second motion.
I have a motion and a second. Any discussion? Hearing none. All those in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Opposed, motion carries. Item number 24.
Motion to approve Resolution 2021-09 and approve documents authorizing the issuance of revenue bonds in one or more tax-exempt series by the General Authority of South Central Pennsylvania in an aggregate principal amount not to exceed $14 million, proceeds of which will be used to provide funds for a project consisting of the refunding of the Pennsylvania Higher Education Facilities Authority multi-mode revenue bonds, York College of Pennsylvania project, and Series 2014 T2, and Series 2014 T3, and the payment of certain costs of the issuing bonds.
A second motion.
I have a motion and a second. And we're joined today by our friend, Canetha, from the York County Economic Alliance, who is an expert in this.
Thank you. Good morning. I'm happy to be here to present this request, just for the public's benefit. The General Authority of South Central Pennsylvania is a conduit issuer of tax-exempt debt, which is a federally authorized program to access lower interest rate financing for organizations such as York College. The issuances by the General Authority do not increase the indebtedness of the county. We are a conduit issuer. With me today is Matt Smith of York College, who would be happy also to answer any questions the Commissioners may have.
I guess my only question is, this is a refunding. Is there a percentage of saving for the organization? And obviously, are you extending the term of the debt, or keeping it the same?
First of all, thank you for having us this morning. We appreciate your consideration. It really is to lock in what we believe will be a lower interest rate for a longer period of time than we currently have set. So, you know, we really believe it's in the best financial interest of the college to move forward with that.
Okay, so it's a savings for the community. Right. Good.
Exactly.
Thank you.
Questions? Any other discussion? Hearing none. All those in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Opposed, motion carries. Item number 25.
Motion to approve Change Order Number 04-E with WY Electric, Littlestown, Pennsylvania, for the Coroner's Office morgue project. Change order is in a net reduction of $125,000, resulting in a final contract price of $155,589.69. Is that right?
I think it's $125.
$125,000.
It's $125,000, yeah.
You're getting a decimal point out of line here. I'm sitting there going, John, I love you, man. That was great.
I'll second a motion.
John, did you want to share any comments? Maybe give an update on the project?
I'm wearing glasses. Good Lord.
I wish I could get you $125,000. Now, the two change orders before you today are the cleanup from that project that brings the project to an end. The project is complete. I think there's a couple of minor punch list items, and I think we have an open house coming up. So we're happy with it. It looks great. I hope the coroner's very happy with it. And I hope the Commissioners are happy with it.
The big question. I'm going to put you on the spot. Were you on budget, under budget, or?
As far as I know, on my part, we're under budget, but I don't know where we fit in, because the first phase was done under the open-end project before we got involved with the morgue part. The coroner's office part was done as separate. So I've never seen the total amount of money. I believe the part we did, at least the construction contract is under budget.
Great.
And the engineering is under budget.
Well, that's good news.
Yeah.
Any other discussion? Hearing none. All those in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Opposed, motion carries. Item number 26.
Motion to approve Change Order 02-H with Fry Lutz Corporation, Lancaster, PA, for the HVAC improvements at the coroner's office morgue project. Contract price changed is a credit of $2,748.18 reflecting unused items, and reduces the final contract price of $171,927.82.
A second motion.
I have a motion and a second. Any discussion? Hearing none. All those in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Opposed, motion carries. Item number 27.
Motion to approve a proposal from Herbert Rowan &amp; Grubik Incorporated to complete and submit to Pennsylvania Multi Mode Transportation Fund grant applications for the Davie's Drive Extension Project in Springsbury Township in accordance with the cooperation agreement between the County of York and Springsbury Township for a lump sum fee of $7,000. Funding for this proposal will be provided from the local use fees in the 2021 liquid fuels budget.
A second motion.
I have a motion and a second. Any discussion? Hearing none. All those in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Opposed, motion carries. Item number 28.
Motion to approve the appointment of Melanie Pladen of Hanover to the York County Rail Trail Authority for a five-year term effective April 1st, 2021 through March 31st, 2026.
A second motion.
I have a motion and a second. Any discussion? Hearing none. All those in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Opposed, motion carries. Item number 29.
Motion to approve the appointment of Claire Weigle III of York to the York County Rail Trail Authority for a five-year term effective April 1st, 2021 through March 31st, 2026.
A second motion.
I have a motion and a second. Any discussion? Hearing none. All those in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Motion carries. Item number 30.
Motion to approve a bid extension agreement between the County of York on behalf of the York County Prison and Rutter's Dairy, extending the current bid that will be expiring from April thirtieth, twenty twenty-one to July thirty-first, twenty twenty-one.
Our second motion.
I have a motion and a second. Any discussion? Hearing none. All those in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Opposed. Motion carries. I'm number thirty-one.
Motion to approve a bid extension agreement between the County of York on behalf of the York County Prison and Bimbo Bakeries, extending the current bid that will be expiring from April thirtieth, twenty twenty-one to July thirty-first, twenty twenty-one.
Our second motion.
I have a motion and a second. Any discussion? Hearing none. All those in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Opposed. Motion carries. I'm number thirty-two.
Motion to approve the check register for the week of March twenty-fourth, twenty twenty-one, totaling two million, five hundred and sixty-six thousand, nine hundred and fourteen dollars, fifty-seven cents.
Our second motion.
I have a motion and a second. Any discussion? Hearing none. All those in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Opposed. Motion carries. I'm number thirty-three.
Motion to approve the check register for the week of March thirty-first, twenty twenty-one, totaling nine million, two hundred and eighty-four thousand, eight hundred and nineteen dollars, forty-five cents.
Our second motion.
I have a motion and a second. Any discussion? Hearing none. All those in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Opposed. Motion carries. We did have some executive sessions since our last meeting, matters related to personnel. I'm going to move on to other business. Just to reiterate to the public, I'm going to take my mask off more than six feet from Commissioner Smith and Commissioner Hope. Just wanted to give two updates. One, the community vaccination clinic that we collaborated with Wellspan is open. It is up and running. We are able to process approximately six thousand vaccinations on a weekly basis. So, if you're out there and you meet the criteria for Phase One A, please feel free to go to mywellspan.org and get yourself registered for vaccination. In addition, the clinic, because of the way that it's structured and the location, we have the ability to expand when we get additional vaccine capacity. So, we want to assure the public that that's up and running. And I'll knock on wood that so far, so good. Things seem to be running very seamlessly. It's located in the old AC Moore Building, which is at three fifty-one Lauks Road. For those of you that have an interest in learning more about what's going on with the vaccination in our community, as well as the state, please feel free to visit our website at www.vaccinateyorpk.org. If you remember last week, Wade Gobrak from the Planning Commission gave a little tutorial in that website. When we look at our current statistics comparing York County to other counties across the Commonwealth, we're keeping pace with other counties in our community. We're at roughly around thirty-four percent of our population vaccinated. Overall, at the state level, it's running around thirty-seven percent. We're certainly in line with other communities out there across the Commonwealth. And last, but certainly not least, on behalf of the Board of Commissioners, March twenty-ninth, for those of you that aren't aware, was National Vietnam War Veterans Day. All three commissioners attended a service. So, for those Vietnam veterans that are watching today, welcome home and thank you for your service. For our other veterans that are out there watching today, we thank you as well. So, again, a special welcome home to the Vietnam veterans who are out there watching today. So, with that, we'll move on to public comment.
I just might want to say one thing, and I know Julie and I have been talking about this, but just for anybody listening, for small businesses and hospitality, this is the last day that the CHIRP application process is open, until five o'clock. It's March thirty-first. I know the three commissioners have been out canvassing with some businesses and giving out funding. It's five thousand to fifty thousand dollars for small hospitality and restaurants and things like that. So, if anybody's listening and haven't applied yet, today's the last day if they want to get their application in.
We'll open up for public comment. If I could have a motion to adjourn.
I make a motion to adjourn the meeting.
Second.
I have a motion and a second. Any discussion? Hearing none. All those in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Opposed. We are adjourned. For folks watching, we're just going to pause for about two minutes before we move to Salary Board to take a photo with Sarah from the YWCA, so she can be on her way. Just bear with us for maybe three minutes, and then we'll open up Salary Board.
Yeah, that's a good idea. Sarah, do you want to hold that?
Stand here right there. You can hold that.
Yeah. That's the first time I ever used that thing.
Thanks, everyone, for your patience. I will call the Salary Board to order for March thirty-first.
I make a motion to approve the minutes from the March seventeenth, twenty twenty-one Salary Board Meeting as submitted.
Second.
I have a motion and a second. Any discussion? Hearing none. All those in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Motion carries. I'm number two.
I make a motion to approve the positions, salaries, hours of work, and fringe benefits as provided by existing collective bargaining agreements or set forth in the York County Ploy Handbook or York County Policy Manual for the following departments and row offices with no additional benefits or concessions unless otherwise noted, as stated in the internal Salary Board detail. Department Five, voter registration; Department Seventeen, information services; Department Twenty-Eight, MHID IDD; Department Twenty-Three, Conservation District; Department Twenty-Five, Human Services; Department Thirty-One, juvenile probation; Department Thirty-Two, adult probation; Department Thirty-Nine, prison; Department Forty, children, youth, and families; Department Sixty-One, court administration; Department Seventy, emergency nine-one-one; and the row officers of Department Fifty-Four, clerk of courts; and Department Fifty-Eight, district attorney.
Second.
I have a motion and a second. Any discussion? Hearing none. All those in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Opposed. Motion carries. If I could have a motion to adjourn.
Make a motion to adjourn the meeting.
Second.
I have a motion and a second. Any discussion? Hearing none. All those in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Opposed. We are adjourned, and we'll move on to Retirement Board. I call the Retirement Board of March thirty-first to order.
Make a motion to approve the minutes of the previous meeting held on March seventeenth, twenty twenty-one as submitted.
Our second motion.
I have a motion and a second. Any discussion? Hearing none. All those in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Opposed. Motion carries.
Now, Greg Stump, Boomerang Consulting Group will be presenting the actuarial assumption review and experience study for twenty twenty-one.
And for those watching, Greg did bring a PowerPoint presentation, so hopefully it'll be a little more interactive for folks out there watching.
I brought copies, too. I want to take a minute. Thank you. Is it condensed version? Okay.
It's just a PDF. Yeah.
Can't make it full screen?
Yeah. Full screen is just not there. Sorry.
Oh, it's okay.
They just sent it to me in a PDF. If you just hit, like, the arrow button.
It'll work. Okay.
It's on the screen here. I don't think it can make it full screen, but you do have the handout, and I'll try to send it over to you. So.
Oh, okay. I don't want to get the whole thing on the screen. I'm here today to talk to you about my favorite subject, the actuarial assumptions. This is the first time that I'm talking about all the assumptions. The last time I was here, we talked about the valuation. We talked about some projections, and we will go through those things today, too. But this is the study that we do once every five years. Some assumptions you kind of look at more often, but this is the study where we look at everything. Most people, when they think of actuarial assumptions, they think, oh, yeah, that's a seven percent, or that's six-point-nine percent, you know, that everything's based on. That's true, but that's just one of the assumptions. That's the big one. But that's only one. There are a lot of other assumptions, and that's what I want to talk about. So, all right, stand over here a little more. So, I'm going to give you a little funding background to help put things in perspective. I'm not going to spend an hour on this, you know, maybe fifteen, twenty minutes total, and talk about the current actuarial assumptions, the review that we did, the summary of all the recommendations that we have, and, of course, importantly, the cost and funding impact, you know, what does this all mean? Long story short, the fund's in really good shape. Your pension fund is doing great. So, if you have questions at any point, just interrupt me. I would rather that than wait till the end. So, here's an analogy that's really helpful to think of how pension funding works, and I've used this with almost every client I have. So, think of it as saving for college funding. So, you know you're planning on having a child, so you have roughly twenty years to save for the college funding. So, the first thing you probably do is figure out how much you think it's going to cost twenty years from now. So, that's the goal in the red dot there, and on the left-hand side, you can see that's two-hundred thousand, and everything's rounded here. And then you'll figure out, well, how much do I think I can earn by putting that away in a five-twenty-nine or something else? And, you know, how much do I have to put in every year to just make that happen? So, in this example, it's about four thousand dollars. It's the green line across the bottom, and it's red on the right-hand side. So, we think if we just put four thousand dollars in every year, at the end of twenty years with the compound earnings and everything, we'll have what we need. Then, at any point in time, you can check to see if you're on track. That's the blue line. So, that's that asset target. So, you know, when the kid's ten years away from college, you should have, just reading off the graph there, about sixty thousand dollars, and you can always check that. The next slide, I just changed the slide, although the only thing that's different now is the labels. So, same concept. When we look at pension funding, we have a goal for each person. This is how much we think we need to fund their retirement. And at any point in time in their career, we stop and say, okay, we think we need sixty thousand dollars right now because when they retire, we think we'll need two-hundred thousand. Now, that, you know, it's a moving target, just like college, you know, college costs are, moving target. So, we call that asset target the actuarial accrued liability. So, when you see report or the numbers I talk about today, that's what it means. Actuarial accrued liability just means how much should we have? This is in terms of one person, and for the whole plan, we just put everybody together and say, this is how much we think we should have, how many millions. And the annual cost is called the normal cost. When somebody goes to college or, you know, for a pension fund, when they retire, there is no normal cost. We know what their benefit is, and we know we're going to pay them for the rest of their life, plus maybe a surviving spouse. So, what happens along the way is when you're funding for a child's college or when you're funding a pension plan, things don't always line up. So, you may get to, you know, partway through the career of someone or partway through the college funding, and you find out you have a shortfall. Things didn't happen the way you thought. You didn't earn as much as you thought you were going to earn. The college costs got more expensive. The kid's going to go to college early because he's a genius. So, you have this actual asset line, the red line here, and when it's below the blue, that just means there's a shortfall. In actuarial terms, we call that the unfunded actuarial accrued liability. So, that's just translating for you. The normal cost is still there. That's still, you know, it fluctuates a little bit, but that pretty much is what it is. For the college funding, we thought we put four thousand in. We keep doing that. But what do you do when there's a difference between the red and the blue line? What you do is, and this is page, this is the page that doesn't have a number, but if it did have a number, it would be page six. What you do is you just start putting in more. So, if you look at the very bottom of that slide or on your page in front of you, there's that light blue line at the bottom. So, you still have that normal cost. You're always putting that in, but then you put in this catch-up contribution. And in actuarial terms, we call that the amortization of the unfunded, meaning it's just supposed to close part of that gap between the red and the blue. So, where the fund is right now, it's very similar to this picture. The red line is below the blue, meaning you're not a hundred percent funded, you're less than a hundred percent funded, but it's pretty close. So, it's not that far below. There are plans out there that are, you know, fifty and sixty percent funded, and there's a huge gap, and that they're really struggling. So, that's something helpful to keep in mind, you know, throughout the rest of it. I'm done with the college funding example, but, you know, you can come up with a lot of examples of why the red line would be below the blue in thinking about saving for college, and here are some examples of what can happen when we're talking about pension funding. And some of them are the same. So, this is categorized into, you know, whether something hurts or helps based on if you get more than you expect or less than you expect. Investment earnings is pretty straightforward, pretty obvious, you know? If you get more earnings than you thought, that helps. That always helps, and that happened in twenty twenty and twenty nineteen. If the salaries are higher than you thought, you know, we project the salaries based on actual experience, it's a good thing, you know, for employees, but it actually hurts because now that the salary's higher, the pension benefit's going to be higher later. And you can look at these on, like, a year-to-year basis, which is what we do for the valuation, or you can look at it on a long-term basis, which is what we do for the assumption review like today. Retiree longevity, meaning how long people live. If they live longer, that's great, but it actually hurts the pension funding. We thought we were going to pay them till this age. Now, we've got to pay them till a couple of years later. Retirements, and these are not quite as obvious, but if you think about it, it makes sense. If you get more retirements than you thought, say, we expect fifty retirements in a year. If we get sixty, that means people are going out earlier than we thought, for the most part. And if people are going out earlier, just like that college funding, you don't have the twenty years. Now, you only have eighteen years, and now you've got to start paying them. So, when you have more retirements, that generally costs more. When you have more terminations, more turnover than you expect, that's not good for the county. It's not good for any organization, but it does help the pension funding. It's, you know, it's like the kid coming to you in third grade and saying, I know for sure I'm never going to college. Okay, well, you can use the college funding for something else then. Increases in benefits without increased funding, that's another thing that has caused shortfalls. That generally does not happen in Pennsylvania counties because there are rules about it here, Act Ninety-Six. But, so, those are the major things, and those are the things we look at with the assumption review. So.
There's five of them listed here. Do they all have the same, like, percentage of effect on the retirement system?
No. In fact, that's a great question, and I can tell you that they're not, I should probably put them in order of how much impact they have. But what the impact is, the first one definitely has the most impact, investment performance. It can happen in one year. It can happen over the course of five, ten, twenty years. Salaries, that only impacts part of the population because retirees, they don't have any salary increases anymore. The retiree longevity definitely has an impact. Probably that's number two on the list, and the third one's probably the retirements. You know, if you think everybody's going to retire at, you know, well, think about the college funding. If you think, you know, every kid's going to go to, you have five kids, and you think If you think, you know, every kid's going to go to, you have five kids and you think all five of them are going to go to college when they turn 18, well, if they all go at 16, now you need more savings. Same thing with the retirements, you know? If you think they're going to go out at 60 and they start going out at 56, you need more funding. But that's why we look at these things. But yeah, really good question. So the whole process, just the overall, you know, year-to-year, long-term process for me and for the actuarial work we do is we have to set assumptions to determine the costs. Basically, we just have to figure out for every person, what are we going to pay them and how long are they going to live? That's it. Even if you just hired them, we still have to project, okay, well, in 30 years, we think this person's going to have a, you know, $9,000 a month benefit with inflation and everything. And we think they're going to live to 87 or whatever, you know? It's, it's all based on that. So we have to set assumptions. That's done every year. But then we adjust the cost every year. So when the investment return comes in at, you know, 14% instead of 6.9, that helps. We just pointed that out. And then we adjust the cost. We, we, we say, all right, that catch-up contribution just got a little smaller. And then what we're doing today, we are here, is adjusting the expectations. So we look at all the assumptions and we say, all right, is, is what we assume really what's happening on the ground? Are people really retiring at the ages we think? Is there the level of turnover that we think? Are people living as long as we think? So that's what we're looking at. So we look at changes in economic conditions, life expectancy, turnover in retirement age, and that's what we're going to talk about for the rest of this. The current assumptions are spelled out in about three pages, I think, in the valuation report. So this is a really small snapshot of it, but that's basically the key assumptions. You know, the investment return, 6.9, salary increases, just a level percent every year, year-to-year, it's not actually happening like that. And then you get into retirement, mortality, termination rates, those vary. So it's not like you just say, okay, we're going to have 50 people quit every year. No, it's, there's a percentage based on how much service they have, maybe, maybe their age, maybe there's a different rate for male versus female. So that's, that's how most of those are set up. Mortality rates are, you know, a single rate for every single age. So, you know, an 80-year-old retiree has a, you know, 0.8% chance of dying in that next year, stuff like that. So that's, that's all the assumptions. And at the end of this, in the appendix of what you have in front of you there and what's going to be on the screen, it's spelled out in a little more detail, still somewhat condensed. And then there's the new version based on, on, on our analysis. Most important assumption, investment return. The way we do this, and this graph is not really self-explanatory, so I'll go through it with you here, but the way we do it is we simulate returns for your portfolio. So it depends on the asset mix. So we look at your target mix. We have inputs from every investment consultant we work with and we have a survey of them and there's maybe a dozen. And they tell us, okay, for, you know, small cap equities, this is the return expectation, this is the standard deviation we expect, and then here's all our correlation factors between all the different asset classes. So it's, you know, small cap, large cap, international, high-yield bonds, everything they have. Some firms actually have like 50 different classifications. And who you work with, Marquette, has a nice condensed list of them that we find really helpful. We take the average. So if some firms are a little more conservative and they say, well, you're only going to get, you know, 4% from equities and other firms are a little more optimistic and they think, well, you might get, you know, 8% from your equities, we just average them. So we're kind of getting a consensus view. We do compare notes with Marquette, just to make sure, you know, I don't want to come here and tell you one thing and then they're going to tell you something completely different. So we average them, we run this simulation. It's, and it, and it's based on all those expectations, you know, the expected return, the expected standard deviation and the correlation factors. So the, the expected return is a really simplified way to do it. You know, you multiply your, your 40% equities times, you know, the expected return and your 20% fixed income, et cetera, you take a weighted average. That doesn't really accomplish, you know, real world representation. The standard deviation, the higher it is, the more volatility, that kind of lowers your expected return, but correlation helps. You know, if you have a properly diversified portfolio, which you do, and I can't talk about it, you know, Lee Martin can explain all those things, but that helps. So, you know, you get, you get this average and it's knocked down by the, by the volatility and it's, and it's improved by the correlation. And what we see in this graph is a compound return over a 30-year simulation. So the top left says you have a 99% chance of getting at least zero over 30 years, compound, right? So that's not surprising. And the bottom right says you have less than a 1% chance of getting a 14% return over a full 30 years. So neither one of those is surprising, but look how steep the slope is in the middle. So that's, that's why this is such a tough, you know, assumption to nail down because you, you move, you know, from 6% to 7%, that's a big difference in the probability. So what all those, what the, every point on the blue line tells you is what is the probability of getting that return over 30 years or at least that return? So right in the middle, we have the median circled and it says 6.8%. So that means that's the 50/50 spot. That's a good place to start. That does not mean that whatever that median is, you have to adopt that assumption. We just use that to evaluate your assumption without the simulation. So we started at 6.9%. We have a median of 6.8%. That's a relatively small change, so we're telling you, change the assumption to 6.8%. Sometimes we do this and we might have a client that uses seven and a quarter, or I think there might even be some counties that use seven and a half still, and we come up with 6.8. So we tell them, okay, let's decrease it and we can talk about how much. But here it was just a 10 basis point change. That is the most important assumption and it's good news that, that, you know, it's not a huge, huge change. Next most important assumption is mortality. A lot of information on this slide, but basically what we do is we take the actual experience of the plan, of the retirees and beneficiaries versus the mortality table. So this is based on the table we're recommending. Now, just a little background on this, there's been a massive amount of research on mortality over the past decade or so, such that the tables that, that were in use two years ago, they're just completely outdated. We were using a version of RP 2000, which of course is more than 20 years old now, but they used to name the tables based on when they were published. So 2000 actually meant data from people that died in the 90s. Now they name the tables based on the data, which is better. So they've kind of changed, they being the Society of Actuaries. So now when you see a table called PUB 2010, which stands for public sector, or PRI 2012, which stands for private sector, that's the, those were actually published just recently, just in the last couple of years. But the date, it refers to the data set that they have because it takes a long time to compile and do those studies. So we have this bank of standard mortality tables that we have to choose from and say, which one fits the plan experience the best? Because, you know, if you were a huge, huge plan with millions of participants, we could just make your own table and say, that's, that's enough to just say, okay, whatever your experience is, that's what it is. But most plans aren't that big. CalPERS is one, you know, they have, I don't know, 2 million, 3 million participants. I think the state of Illinois does their own, but for county plans, it's just, we have to use a standard table. But there are more than one standard table, so we have to decide which one fits the experience the best. And it happened to be PUB 2010, general, meaning general employees, which isn't surprising because that actually fits the description of your population the best too. The reason there are dollar signs there is because, you know, we can, and we do, look at expected number of deaths every year and over five years and over 10 years. But what really matters is how many dollars of deaths. If you have, say, five 81-year-olds and one gets a $10,000 a month benefit and the others are lower and, and one gets, one only has a $1,000 a month benefit, what matters to the plan liability, if, if, if four of them die, but the one with the $10,000 benefit lives, that didn't really, that didn't really help a whole lot. You still have a higher liability. So that's why you see dollar signs here. We don't expect the table to match your experience exactly, but what you see is on the left side and the blue is the males and, and there's always different male and female tables. It's been like that for a long, long time. And the age groups, as you would, would probably guess, they're, they're, the higher the age group, the more deaths and the quarter tapers, tapers down after age 80 because the people, a lot of them have already died. So we just compare, you know, males versus females, age group versus age group, dollars of benefits versus dollars of benefits expected. And so that's fairly close. It's, it's a little different on some of the age groups, but if we put all those numbers together, we got $1.1 million worth of deaths over that five-year period and we would have expected 1.076. So that's really close. So that, and the whole point of this is you want to choose a mortality table so that you're not underfunding the plan. You don't want to fund your plan as if everybody's going to die at 79 when they're really going to die at 85 averages. So that's, that's a big assumption.
So this is, just one quick, this might be a stupid question. If this is a five-year model on life expectancy now for York County, are the numbers skewed because of COVID for last year where mortality rate went up so much because of a pandemic that may not be here next, for the next four years and it would affect the rate or not?
Well, the answer right now is no, because that data stops at 12, 31, 19.
Oh, 19, okay.
Yes. But that's a good point because going forward, yeah, we might see an increase for that year. In fact, we already, I don't think we have all the data yet from York County, but for another county we work with, we noticed right away that there were more deaths than, than the average over the past four years. You know, it was, it was, you know, more than, more than 10, it was like 10 or 20 more than we thought. So yeah, that'll work its way into the analysis. But another good thing about the mortality assumption is that nowadays, and we as actuaries have figured out all these assumptions except for that return because it's, you know, the slope is, is so steep. But all, we have solutions for all the other assumptions now. We review the retirements and terminations every five years like we're doing today. For mortality, what has become the best practice and very common practice now is to use generational improvements, which means we have the table which says, okay, 81-year-old, 1% chance of dying in the next year. Someone that's going to be 81 five years from now, 0.9% chance of dying. So we, so there's an improvement built in. And basically the concept is something that's been, you know, shown study after study, if you were born in 1990, you probably lived longer than someone born in 1950, just on average. So that's what the generational improvements mean. And when I say, you know, the actuarial world has figured this out, gone are the days when, when you had a new table come out every 10 years. This is the way it was before, 71, 83, 94, 2000, that's when the tables came out. And you'd apply to your pension plan and your costs would go up 10% or 20%. No more of that. Now it's just going to be minor adjustments. So, but yeah, the COVID will work its way into the data. Next most important assumption, retirements. So we have a table of rates and it shows, in fact, if you want to look at the specific rates, they are, towards the back, there's, there's a page that's got a lot on it and it's probably, it might be sideways if I look at it here. Let me see. No, it's not, okay. So there's a page called current assumptions. There's all the actual rates right in the middle. So this, now here's where the, the, your assumptions are really kind of flawed, the, the ones before we made the changes. Because these rates, the retirement rates, the termination rates, were based on a very old study where one actuarial firm who happens to work with a lot of counties and still does, put all the counties together and said, okay, well, you know, if you're 55, you've got a 7% chance of retiring if you're eligible. This is only if you're eligible. If you're 60 or 61, you have an 8% chance. And, you know, it kind of builds up to the point where if you're 80 and up and still working, we just assume you're going to leave in that current year. The problem with that, the whole study that was done, is the experience county to county is not the same. Some counties have a significantly different experience, especially with turnover, but even with, with when people retire. So this is the first time really where York County experience is being looked at. So that's a good thing. So let me go back to the retirement slide, right there. So what we did was we applied those rates, the rates that, that were being used before that we had to use for the last valuation because we hadn't done the study yet, so we just used what was in place. And we looked at, on the left-hand side, this is all color-coded by the way, the red bars throughout the rest of this is, that's what actually happened. The green bars is what we thought would have happened and the blue bars is what we, we would have thought if we applied the new assumptions. So what we see on the left-hand side is a lot more retirements ages 55 to 59 than what we're expected. So that's 7%, that 8%, way too low for York County. So that needs to be adjusted. Even age 60 to 64, so everybody before age 65, we just, we're getting a lot more than we thought. Even a few, even a little bit more ages 65 to 69. So overall, we just had more retirements than we expected and that goes, goes back to the helps and hurts, that hurts. So that was actually, you know, driving costs.
And Greg, it's because the prior actuary was using the assumption for the state of Pennsylvania, which included all the counties, and it wasn't reflective of York County. So now that we're zoning in on York County, which is what we should be doing.
Yep.
There's a lot of counties out there that are not, not in good shape because they're still using that same assumption.
Yeah.
But these guys figured out that...
It's different. I mean, I'm, I'm from Pennsylvania, from Delaware County. I, I know it's different county to county. You don't have to go that far to find a completely different, you know, workforce, different So what we're doing is, is just recommending different rates so that we get close to what actually happened. We don't try to nail it spot-on because that's pretending that every five years is going to look like the last five years. For mortality, we only have five years of experience. Next time we do this in 2024, we'll have 10 years of experience, which is great, that's more credible. But for things like retirement and turnover, you do want to use the last five years because you'll pick up on the trends of people retiring earlier or later, turnover higher or lower than you thought. So the, I'm just going to flip to the back again. This slide looks just like the current assumption slide, in fact, it's right after it, and it just shows, sorry, shows proposed assumptions, that's what it says at the top. So what you see there is at 55, instead of 7% of eligible people retiring, it's actually more like 30%. And we also noticed that the female rates were higher. There's always a little bit of a difference between male and female. Mortality is well-established, but for things like retirement and termination, if there's enough of a difference, we'll adjust one or the other. If they're pretty close, then we just use the same assumption for everybody. But we did notice that there was about a 10% higher rate for females at most ages. So when we apply those separately, two males and females, and we put all the data together, we get what's on the right and that's what you want. You want, you want it to be close to what happened. Same exact type of analysis with terminations. So current versus recommended, the current, actually, you know, you're kind of lucky here because it came out pretty close to what that, that old statewide table was predicting. That's not the case for every county. We did a study like this for another county in Pennsylvania and their term, their turnover was one-tenth of what they expected. Their costs went up a lot because they were funding as if people were just going to come and leave, but they weren't, they were staying. Yours is fairly close, you know, fairly representative of that, of that table. So we did make some small adjustments, but what you can see is, what you might know intuitively, most people will leave in their first four years of service. That's true of almost every study like this I've ever done and it makes sense, you know? If you, you don't like a job, if you're not going to stick around for 15 years, you're going to leave, you know, soon after you take the job. And it just decreases every time and you can see that clearly on the slide. So the recommended rates, those are not major adjustments. They are, there are adjustments to the rates and in fact, it actually caused the cost to go down a little bit. But we found here, the female rates were also higher, 35% higher in fact. So, you know, those are the kind of things we look at every five years and sometimes that changes, you know, the female rate being higher or lower and sometimes it's, you know, the, the 35% might change to something else.
I should know this, but I don't and I asked the question, since obviously, like you said, that most people that new hires in the first three, four years, five years may leave for unexpectedly, they pay so much in every pay and we match it, what do they get back if they're not vested?
They get their own contributions with interest.
Their own contribution, yeah.
With interest, yep.
Okay. That's what I thought, but I wasn't sure.
Yeah, no, they don't get the county portion. Those are all the, the assumptions. We just went over them one by one. So the rest of this is kind of summarizing all the different tables and my favorite part, the projections. But, so here's a summary of the recommendations. Two and a half percent inflation and wage growth. That assumption has really changed over the years. It was maybe 20 years ago where, you know, 4% inflation assumption was common. And that's when, that, those are the days when a lot of plans were assuming eight and a half percent returns. They kind, they kind of came down together. Two and a half percent's a good assumption now. Some people will even say it should be lower, but I think that's, that's, that's fair. 3% was common for a lot of years, but two and a half percent's good. That affects the wage growth, it affects the investment return, it affects the career salary increases. I didn't go over that one with you, but career salary increases means we think everybody is going to, you know, the pay will keep up with inflation in the long run. That's just kind of theoretical, but it makes perfect sense. If it doesn't, if it, if you're, if the pay increases much faster than inflation, then you have a higher standard of living than everywhere else. And if the pay doesn't keep up with inflation, you know, 50 years from now, you'd be paying $100 for a loaf of bread. So pay will keep up with inflation, but people's individual pays increase faster than that because they're moving through their career, they're getting promotions, they're getting merit increases. So what we found is that in the first 15 years of service, people's pays generally went up about four and a half percent, which is higher than the assumption of four, the old assumption. But after that, it was three and a half percent, which is lower. So an average is end up being about the same. The demographic assumptions we just talked about, rates of retirement termination, the mortality tables with the, with the generational projections. PUB again stands for public sector, the G stands for general employees because they split it between teachers, police and fire and general employees. And the SSA stands for Social Security Administration, has nothing to do with social security benefits, they just have the largest database. You know, obviously they have millions of people in their database and they do a lot of research on mortality projections.
But is it true that your economic assumptions are the driving factor in what each year we have to put in our, our retirement plan from the county general fund budget?
Yes and no. I mean, yes, that's the most impactful assumption, but, you know, any actuary will tell you, it's the actual returns that, that really drive the cost.
Okay.
Right? So we're just trying to line up long-term expectations for what we think's going to happen. And, you know, that's why that gets adjusted from time to time. So the next page has the impact of the changes and then we'll, we'll look at the projections and then it'll be it. But so if we break these down into categories, the economic assumption changes, lower inflation, that salary that, that's four and a half, three and a half instead of just four all the time, and the return, 6.9 to 6.8, that adds about 5 million, 4.9 million to the actual liability. And, you know, this is a pretty large plan, so that's not a big change, not a big impact. It does add a lot to the contribution because that's driven by the, that normal cost portion. That's like all of a sudden realizing every college out there, the tuition went way up, so you've just got to put more in for the normal cost. Mortality tables, that was a minor change because we, we actually got ahead of that one. We made the change last year, knowing that, that the old tables were outdated, so we just guessed, took another county and said, let's just use what we're using for them until we do the study. That worked out nicely because then the, the change that we had to make only resulted in $3 million increase in liability. That's just, you know, moving that red line down a little bit further. Rates of retirement was a big change because people going out at 55 at a rate of 30% versus 7%, that costs more. The, and that's, that's actually the biggest line item on the whole page, 1.3 million[1651.33] more per year, and that's ongoing. The rates of termination helped, even though the numbers were about the same, just the different pattern meant that, okay, we're probably overfunding that a little bit, so that's a decrease in the liability, slight increase in the normal cost because of the pattern. Contribution timing, the, the old way was we just calculate the contribution and then just add interest to the end of the year, that's 6.8% now. But the actual contributions are going in in April, so if we take that into account, you don't have to give it a whole year's worth of interest, only a third of a year. So that helps. That's, that's the negative item on the page. So the combined impact of everything makes your funding look a little worse, but that's, it's a little counterintuitive because your funding is actually much stronger with the new assumptions. It just looks 2% lower. And of course, that adds, adds some to the annual contribution, which is what we're going to talk about now. So these assumptions have not been run through the current valuation yet, we just applied them to the old valuation to get those numbers, but your population doesn't change that much in one year or even a few years, that it's going to have a wildly different impact. It'll be pretty close to that. So we'll apply them to the 21 valuation, which we're starting to work on now. The liability and cost will increase from those assumptions, but it will decrease from other experience, specifically the investment experience. It was a positive year in 2020, positive year in 2019, so that will drive the cost down. That means it's, it's actually a really good time to change the assumptions. There will be other gains and losses that we don't know about yet. It could be, you know, COVID deaths, something like that, we'll see when we, when we look at the retiree data. It could be any of those things with the helps and hurts, you know, we could find out for one year that, well, people stuck around past 55 and that rate was a little lower, that might help. We don't know those things yet, but next time I come back in a couple of months, we will. Overall impact, strength in plan funding, that's probably should be bold and bigger font because that's really the main point of all of this. Lower probability and magnitude of potential experienced losses, that's key. The reason we do this is, is right there. I mean, if, if we're lining up the assumptions, the expectations with reality, then the chance of having something that varies from that is, is less. And when it does vary, it won't be that far off. The administrative factors, we haven't mentioned this at all today, and this is a whole separate undertaking, but the administrative factor for the plan should be updated every five years when you change, potentially change your mortality table and the interest rate. Because if you don't, you have a little bit of a mismatch where the factors are based on 7%, you're assuming 6.8, the factors are based on an old table, mortality table, and we were using, we're using a much newer one now. So administrative factors are, the number that's used to convert people's account balances when they retire to an annuity. So unless they take option four, option four and any of the forms of option four means they can take their money out. Everybody has that, that opportunity. But if they don't, if you leave it in, it gets converted to an annuity. So that factor, you know, you take the $100,000 balance, you divide it by 10, you get, you know, $10,000 a year annuity paid monthly. With the new factors, that divided by 10 might be divided by 12 now. So that part of the benefit will decrease a little bit. However, the other fact, the other use of the factors is to convert the benefit from, you know, what they call no option to option one, two, three, or one of the other four, you know, four A, B, C, where it's based on a present value or a survivor benefit. Those will go up. If we know people are living longer, then the, you know, choosing a 100% joint survivor, so your spouse gets your full benefit when you die, the cost of that is lower with the longer life expectancy because the, the old factors might have assumed you're going to die at 79. Well, then we got to start paying your spouse. But now, if we know you're going to live till 86, we don't have to pay that spouse until seven years from then, so the, the factors will be more generous. That's all I'm going to say about it today because we'll have to have a whole nother meeting to talk about this. It's something, the other counties we work with have already done it, that based on their last five-year study, they went through and changed all their factors. And it's just a good practice to do it once every five years. You, you should not change them every year, you know, when you change from 7% to 6.9, you don't want to go through and change the factors because it's a big project, not just for us. It's not, it's not a huge project for the actuary, but it's a pretty big project for the administration to get all those worked into the system. All right. Next study will, will be five years from now. So that will cover, it will cover 20, 20 through 2024, but it'll be done in 2025. I think I said the wrong year earlier. The, the current and proposed assumptions are included there, so you know what you're voting on because I, I would like an affirmative vote of, yes, we accept all the recommendations. So that's why the, all the details are there, I won't, I won't read them now. But the best part is right at the end. So this is something I've showed you before, and this is something we update several times every year. We update it when we know what the investment return was, you know, after December 31st, and we update it when the valuation's done. And then we might update it, you know, to do the budget estimate in, in the fall. So this is a projection, starting at 2021, of what we think your funding status will look like over the next 20 years. What it will actually look like over the next 20 years will not be that, because this is just a weather forecast, it's based on the best information we have right now. In reality, it tends to be a lot more volatile, but so this is kind of where we're going. And that's a really good picture because what it shows us is two pieces of that. The red line is the unfunded liability. That is going to drop, or we, you know, best estimate, it's going to drop substantially over the next few years as the recent investment gains are recognized. We use five-year asset smoothing, so when you have a great year, you don't recognize the full impact until five years later because, you know, you might have a couple of subpar years. So that's why it drops a lot in the first five years. After that, it's going to drop because you're making amortization payments. Part of the contribution the county puts in every year covers that shortfall between the red line and the blue line. And so as you make those payments, those catch-up contributions, the red line continues to go down. If we extend that graph out another few years, it goes all the way to zero. The blue bars are just the, the funding ratios, so we expect within a couple of years to be in the 90s. That's great. A lot of plans can't say that, and, and plans that are in the 50s, 60s, 70s, they're struggling because that red line is higher and that really drives the contribution. So that's a really good picture. Then this is based on all the new assumptions. So that's updated mortality, the 6.8%, all, everything based on the new...
So we just got a chart that we're almost close to $500 million in the retirement fund, 497, I think we got it today. So this shows that we're at 87% and we're off about $65 million in cash. Is that right? Am I reading this right?
You are reading that right. Yep, yep. And that's, and, and by the way, everything on there is an estimate, not just the 120 years from now, even the very first one, because we haven't done the valuation yet. So if you say, you know, is that 87% going to be in our report? Nah, it might be a little different, it might be 88%, it might be 86. It's not going to be wildly different, but it could be a little bit different based on the valuation. But yeah, you're, you're reading that correctly. The same projection, same time period, looking at the cost side of things, is what's shown on this page. Again, based on all the new assumptions, and what we have here is a bunch of different pieces. I'll start at the bottom part. There's all those blue bars, that's that normal cost, that's that annual cost we talked about with the college funding. In this case, we expect it to go up every year, not because your costs are increasing, but is, it's defined as a percentage of pay. So if we think everybody's pay is going to go up every year, then we think the normal cost is going to go up every year. That's par for the course. In fact, if you look at the dotted line, the, the black dotted line throughout the graph, that's thinking of it in terms of today's dollars. So while it kind of looks like it's increasing in some years, the dotted line will show you that, well, it's actually decreasing and then kind of leveling out. The red bars go along with the amortization payments. As that red line goes down, as the, you know, the college funding, the red line gets closer to the blue, those payments get smaller. So what we have is a, a more significant payment in the first year and then just kind of decreases over time as those investment gains are realized. And then it's kind of steady for a while, but this is done in layers. So what happened in one year, you're paying for it still 15 years later. Or what happened in one year that was, you know, a gain, something that helped, you're reducing your costs 15 years later. So it's just all those layers add up. So that's a good picture too. And again, you know, the dotted line is kind of the best way to, you know, kind of view it mentally. The little orange table in the middle on the left towards the bottom, that's, that's our best estimate of what the contributions, the actuarial contribution requirements will be in the next five years. Again, these, these are estimates, when we get the valuation report done, that 14.1 million might be a little less, might be a little more, it's not going to be something, you know, I would, I would say plus or minus a quarter million is probably a good, good range. And then you'll notice it goes down, 13.1, 12.8, 11.6, 11.3, and you can see that right on the graph. And that's all completely a function of the investment gains from the last two years.
So Mark, what do we put in, 2020?
2020, 13 million and change.
Okay, 13 something, okay.
Yeah. So it's, it's, you know, it's, it's a, it's a good picture, it's good news. It is kind of, you know, the, the next year expected to be a little higher, but everything else is in really good shape and, you know, 90% funding is, is, is a great position to be in. In fact, it's better than 100%.
Thank you, thank you.
It is, because when you're at 100% funding, something happens in the market, your unfunded liability could go from $1 to $10 million in one day.
Right.
When you're 90% funded, it's not as volatile, that's why I say that. Obviously, 100 is, you know, higher than 90, but, and that's all I have for you, so I would ask for, for you to vote on it, you know, the recommendations and ask any other questions that you have. And I'm sorry I took longer than I said I would.
My question on page 10, I'm sorry.
Go ahead.
A question on page 10, Greg. So I know you're, you're suggesting a very small decrease, but an advantage of keeping it at 6.9 gives us, be a little bit of a buffer? Am I misinterpreting that? Page 10.
Is that the right one?
Uh, no, this one, yeah, 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 that one.
Okay, got it.
Suggesting 6.9 decrease, actually decreasing the percent.
What, what, I don't understand the question.
Well, no, you're, if you're, if we're at 6.9%, right, we're, we're projecting a higher rate of return versus the 6.9.
The 6.9% that was used last year for 2020, yes, is, is higher than the median. And so when we try to pinpoint that on the graph, we find out that the probability of getting 6.9 is about 48%. So it's a little less than the median. It's not, you know, it's not a red flag, but a 10 basis point move puts you right at the median.
So we, we could leave it at 6.9?
That's what I was getting at, yes.
That's, that's what I was wondering, because if you leave it there, you're not talking much from this perspective, but at the end of the day, if you overcompensate, that's a better thing than undercompensating.
Yeah, and, and if you're asking me if you can leave it there, I'm not going to argue, you know, it's a 10, it's 10 basis points. Nobody really knows.
We brought it down from 7.25 or whatever over the last couple of years, yeah.
But what we're saying, what this is saying is, the likelihood of getting the 6.9%
is less than 50%.
Is less than 50%.
Yeah, all right.
You don't have as great of a chance of getting that high of a return.
So it's the probability, not the actual percentage we're going to contribute or whatever. Okay, I got you now.
Okay.
That was the only question I had, Greg.
Okay.
So we can, we can vote on the other things and then just keep it at 6.9 too, if you want.
I'm, I'm open, so.
What is the, what is, I guess, what is the difference to you? I mean, how much does this affect your whole?
I would suggest, with all of the assumptions.
It's, it's up to you, you know, I, I can't, if, if, there are three types of disagreements with assumptions, there, with, with clients, you know, with boards. The first type is, is this what we're talking about now, it's a minor difference, it's not a big deal, we, we just, you know, you say, leave it at 6.9 for another year. We do it, all those cost projections, the 14.1 and all that, they would be 0.9 million lower per year if at the 6.9. Second type of disagreement is, it's a little farther off, you want to do seven and a half and I'm telling you 6.8, so I'm going to put in my report, we recommend 6.8 and this would have been the impact. And then the third type is something really bad, where I had a client once that insisted on using 8.7%. And we said, you can get another actuary to sign the report, because, because we're not doing it. That, and that only happened once in, in 20-some years, so. But yeah, so this is the minor version.
It was just a question, I'm, I'm comfortable, I just wanted...
You were asking earlier about page 19, Doug, and I, I think the, the takeaway on that page is if you just look at 2021, the normal cost, what we're looking at is a $14 million contribution, based on the, the assumptions, it's $8 million. The difference between the $8 million and 14 million, or that additional $6 million, is because we were way off on our assumptions in the past. So because we didn't have the proper assumptions, we still have to pay that money in to get us to the correct returns based on the actual assumptions. So it's pay me now or pay me later. Either way, you know, you're going to get adjusted to actual... Because of the differences in the mortality table and the differences in what York County, wait, York County retires versus the other counties. Right, rate of returns and everything else. Rate of return, et cetera, right. So it, it's better to have the correct assumptions going in and get the plan funded, it's just going to cost you longer in the long run if you don't.
So then I'll ask for a motion to approve the pension plan assumptions recommended by Boomer Shire Consulting based on their actuarial assumption review and experience study of York County's pension plan.